Looking forward to our next few meetings. This Friday afternoon from four to six thirty, the City Council will be meeting in the hydrangea room for the first of two city council retreats. Then on Monday evening, January twenty-second, we have a closed session that begins at six thirty. This is a closed session to consider a matter that concerns a proposal for a business located or it's about the Washington Adventist Hospital freestanding medical facility, findings of their feasibility report. And the session will be closed pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland General provisions, Article three dash three oh five V four. Then on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, we'll be back here at seven thirty. Our first item will be a vote on the resolution adopting council procedures. And then we will have a discussion of an amendment to the Tacoma Park Code regarding outdoor cafes, an amendment to the code regarding boards and commissions, particularly the facade advisory board, and then a discussion of the amendment of the Tacoma Park Code regarding commercial district facade regulations. On Thursday, January twenty-fifth, we have the second of our city council retreats from six thirty to eight thirty in the hydrangea room. On Monday, January twenty-ninth, the Commemoration Commission will be holding a public hearing regarding streets potentially named for Civil War generals, and that will be here in the auditorium at seven thirty. And then on Wednesday, January thirty-first, we're back here for our regular Wednesday night meeting at seven thirty. We have a number of presentation, work sessions that night. The first is a presentation of the police employee's retirement plan as of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. We have a staff overview of utility work in the city, as well as a PEPCO presentation on the Tacoma to Sligo Electric System Infrastructure Project. And we tentatively have scheduled a presentation of the library design, and that takes us into February. As always, the rolling agenda is on the city website if people would like to take a look at that. Now we'll move to public comments on voting items. Our first voting item this evening is a resolution adopting the two thousand and eighteen legislative priorities. If anyone has any comments regarding the city council's legislative priorities, please come to the podium now. All right, moving on to our, oh, okay, thank you.
I live at two oh three Manor Circle, and I would like to talk about the study to realign streets in the junction. And I spent the afternoon looking at the study, and I began with, my first question was, what is the problem that is being addressed? And I learned, I was referring to the November seventeen, two thousand and sixteen part, portion of the study. And in that, in the beginning parts of that, it says that it was addressing the existing intersection as it is today, and it says all study intersections are expected to operate at overall acceptable conditions. And the biggest excitement seemed to be in this study realigning Carroll Avenue and Sycamore. And I was not sure, it was not clear to me what we would gain by lining up Sycamore and Carroll and how it would make things at the junction go better. And as I read further into the study and got further into the finer details, I saw that the study recommended realigning the streets of Carroll and Sycamore, but in conjunction with closing Sycamore. I've lived at that intersection for over thirty years, and I could have told you that without, for a couple of good lattes, because when they put the light in at Sycamore was when the traffic got really dicey in the intersection. And I can make a number of arguments on historic district concerns. There are some serious historic district concerns that are implied in this decision. But on a personal note, I would like to say that we generally think of a middle-class person's greatest investment is in her home. When I moved in here thirty years ago, I thought Tacoma Park, I didn't think Tacoma Park was the kind of place that would uproot a seventy-four-year-old woman, wipe her out at the age of seventy-four. And I would continue to like to thank that in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Robb.
Thank you.
And I hope you can say for when we discuss this item, because we can clear up a few points.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments regarding resolution adopting the two thousand and eighteen city
My name is Lorraine Pierceall. I'm vice president of Historic Tacoma, and I'm here to ask you on the record, please to not ask for SHA cooperation with the City of Tacoma Park on reconfiguring Tacoma Junction. And I guess I have a question, Mayor Stewart. When you look at what is being proposed, were you aware that Susan Robb's house would be taken as part of this plan that was put forward by the city?
Ms. Pierceall, you know during public comment, Ms. Pierceall, you've been here plenty of time, and you know during public comment, we don't do Q and A. I'm happy to respond after when we take up this agenda item, and you know when my office hours are, and you have my cell phone number, so, thank you.
Well, I just want to give you the benefit of the doubt that perhaps you really never realized that that was what is going on. That's a contributing resource in the historic district. And this whole alignment that was done by SHA is very, it is very questionable how this ever happened without any consultation with the Maryland Historical Trust, because there's a very powerful state law that would prevent this from happening. So this alignment would actually change the historicity of our historic district in such a significant way that in the future, we could experience SHA's arguments that it is no longer historic because our original street patterns are gone, and they can widen the roads. Historic Tacoma is affected by this, and we were never consulted or this was never discussed with us, and I'm going on record that we're very concerned about this. We ask you not to go forward and with this plan, which was attached to your traffic study. It's troubling, so, and I don't see how it can possibly happen under the law, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this voting item? And I'm just going to break protocol here for a second, because I think it's important as people are listening to this, and the city manager can also comment on this. The city did not commission this study. It is not, SHA does not even consider it a study. How this came about, and it's listed on the city website, is that there was concerns about the traffic and pedestrian safety at Tacoma Junction. A number of years ago, council member Mail and myself were advocating for the crosswalks that we did get on Carroll Avenue and the one painted on Ethan Allen. When state highway engineers were out here looking at the intersection, they mentioned to council member Mail and myself and the city staff that they had additional money left over in their budget and could do a cursory look at this intersection and provide some ideas. And that is what was given to us. The city council has never taken it up or nor endorsed this study, and it is just there as one potential idea as a city council, and the city moves forward with the traffic study, as our development partner at Tacoma Junction moves forward with this. Our resolution tonight and our legislative priority is asking for our delegation to keep in mind, as they're looking at different projects around the state and the county, that Tacoma Junction is an area that doesn't function well for our community, and we may ask them in the future to help us with some different ideas as we move forward looking at this area. So just to clarify what this was.
And just, the inclusion is only to make sure that the, when the traffic counts are done, that they look at a variety of different options so that information comes back to the council. It may be that none of those options are even something that they would recommend, but it is something that provides the answers to questions that we have one shot at getting, so it's a way to get information.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments on the resolution adopting the two thousand and eighteen legislative priorities? Okay, moving to the next voting item, it's a resolution regarding the request of TJ Beer, Wine, and Liquor for Sunday Sales. Any comments on that voting item? Next, we have our consent agenda. On the, in the consent agenda, we have a single reading ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant agreement for the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee, a single reading ordinance authorizing replacement police radios, purchase of five, replacement police vehicles, purchase and installation of equipment for the five police vehicles, and appointments to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Any public comments on the consent agenda? All right, and that is our last voting item for this evening, so any other public comments can come up now.
My name is Jay Levy, seventy-four thirty-one Baltimore Avenue. I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for more than forty-two years, and at present have been chair of the Nuclear Free Zone Committee for, I don't know how many years, been way back to the last century. And I brought the whole committee here tonight because we've been working on something for just about a year, and I think, I hope that all of you have read the small fact sheet that we distributed last week, and we'd really like to see the action that we're proposing come to fruition tonight. And I have to tell you, we're very happy that the Nuclear Free Zone Ordinance has been adhered to for thirty-four years, but we really feel at this point, just looking at the headlines in today's press, nuclear scare in Hawaii, the government is trying to come up with new ways of more efficient nuclear weapons, smaller ones, more precise ones. So we feel that whereas we're satisfied with the way the city has been enforcing the Nuclear Free Zone Ordinance in terms of purchases, we feel that there's more to be done, and the issue here is the relationship of the city with the SunTrust Bank. So I think I'll turn it over to our other people to elaborate a little more on what we'd like.
Good evening. My name is Paul Gunter, three oh two Grand Avenue. So, you know, we're obviously referencing the issue of the SunTrust Bank and the city's investments in that. And what I'd like to start off with is just as Jay referenced, some of the current events that are essentially driving us to say that this is of imminent concern, and that we really do think that we need to press the issue as the concerns continue. Just, here's The Guardian, dateline, January nine, two thousand and eighteen, U.S. to loosen nuclear weapons constraints and develop more usable warheads. Here's The Washington Post, January thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, A New Trump Administration's Plan Makes Nuclear War Likelier. This essentially references the two thousand and eighteen draft review of the Nuclear Posture Review, but it recognizes that we're about to go into a phase of construction of new nuclear weapons, one to two kiloton yield. So this is, we're about to embark upon tactical nuclear weapons to make nuclear war more plausible. Hawaii False Alarm Hence It Thin Line Between Mishap and Nuclear War, January fourteen, New York Times. False Alarm Adds To Real Alarm About Trump's Nuclear Risk, New York Times editorial, January thirteen, two thousand and eighteen. Pentagon Planning New Nuclear Weapons, Wall Street Journal, January fifteen, two thousand and eighteen. Pope Warns World Is One Step Away From Nuclear War, January fifteen, Reuters. Nuclear War Now At The Top Of The List Of, For Man-Made Global Threats, USA Today, January seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. According To The World Economic Forum On Global Risks Report, Over One Thousand International Leaders In Business And Government And Academia And Civil Society Are Warning Of The Imminence Of Nuclear War. And finally, the North Korea Will Trigger Nuclear War If It Doesn't Give Up Nuclear Weapons, Tillerson Warns, Newsweek, January seventeen, two thousand and seventeen.
Hello, my name is Kitty Tucker, and I'm also a member of the Nuclear Free Zone Committee. We were set up as a committee ordinance, and we believe that banking on the bomb is dangerous. We think that it pushes corporate weapons producers to offer old disproven ideas to a new group of investors who plan to profit on bomb production. We already have more than four thousand big nuclear bombs, and we don't really need anymore. Small, any type of a small bomb is not likely to be tactically useful, because the spreading radiation from the bomb will affect the troops that are sending it. SunTrust Bank is the bank for the City of Tacoma Park. It's twenty-something on the, Don't Bank On The Bomb List, which is very high. First, Julie Bodie tried to get the Don't Bank On The Bomb information distributed to the city council, but somehow it never made it to the hands of the city council. So we asked for a meeting with the city, and we met in December of twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And we discussed the problems that would be involved with changing accounts, and that it would take time for this to come about. However, we have never seen any statement but that the city council has supported divesting funds on trust because of its nuclear weapon corporation holding. The city gave us papers that we could also find at Don't Bank On The Bomb, which showed that over a five-year period, from twenty-eleven to October twenty-sixteen, more than eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen million dollars had been spent on nuclear weapons production. We also believe that the short-term investment with Goldman Sachs Bank, GE Capital Retail Bank, Capital One, and State Bank of India New are listed as offenders of Don't Bank On The Bomb, so the committee does not think that we should renew these investments, nor any others with offenders on the Don't Bank On The Bomb list.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you for the extra moments.
Shall I go?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, partially prepared. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Julie Bodie. I live at seventy-three fourteen Baltimore Avenue. Speak with you as a member of the Nuclear Free Committee, as a taxpayer, and as a downwinder. And I'm really sorry, Peter Kovar, that I missed your Tuesday meeting. I was unable to go, because I'd like to see, I'd like to see our item, I'd like to see a transfer from SunTrust on the legislative agenda. There aren't, there aren't a lot of nuclear-free banks around here, though there are going to be, they're going to be, oh, gosh, there are going to be more, there are going to be more as public banking takes off. Right now, though, we have First City Bank of D.C., we have a flighty electronic thing that, that seems to be promising called Aspiration Bank, and we have Sandy Spring Bank, which we have pre-existing relationships. Sandy Spring Bank would save us thirty-two thousand dollars, according to notes from a couple of years ago. Sandy Spring Bank is, is a Quaker bank that's been here since eighteen sixty-eight, long in the Quaker tradition. Sandy Spring Bank feeds back into the community. So one of their references is Montgomery, Montgomery Housing Partnership that has made our city a much more livable place. So for instance, it helped finance renewal with the help of Sandy Spring Bank at seventy-six ten Maple Avenue, at the crossroads at Flower Apartments, at eighty-six two four and eighty-six two six Flower Avenue, at the Edinburgh House Apartments, seventy-five one three Maple Avenue, at Gilbert Highlands, eight-five oh eight and eight-five one oh Flower Avenue, at the Hancock Garden Apartments at seven-four oh six and seven-four oh eight Hancock Avenue, at the Parkview Towers at seven-six-six-seven Maple Avenue, and at the Sligo View Apartments. The city's had some problems with Sandy Spring Bank, and Sandy Spring Bank has said, no, they're, they're, they're not real problems. For instance, the city said that Sandy Spring Bank was invested in nuclear companies. Sandy Spring Bank said, no, they're not. There's a holding company where some of, oh, is it telling me to stop?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I will say to the whole committee, the city manager updated where we are in this process. It took a little while to get a consultant to respond to the RFP. There is a meeting with someone next week, I believe, a week after next. And in addition, at any time that you would like to meet with the city council or actually get on the agenda, please just tell us ahead of time, and we will put you on the agenda. So may I suggest that we see what happens at this meeting with the consultant to help us move forward, and then we'll come back to you and update you.
Can I backdate you a minute? May I?
Ms. Bodie, I just would say that, again, this is during public comments, and I know we have other members of the public who would like to speak, so.
All right, I just want to point out there's a fine timeline that was written in, in July of this year.
Yes, and the city manager and I don't, we could try to pull it up, did present on that timeline last week and update the city council on it. And so it's on the city website, attached to our agenda from last week and update on the timeline.
That's very clear.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Reed Barron, sixty-five oh four Allegheny, member of the committee and was the editor of Tacoma Park Newsletter from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety. In addition to our, the portions of the, the ordinance that deal with direct contracting and also, let's say, some indirect contracting through SunTrust, which supports the nuclear industry but is not a nuclear manufacturer, we're also tasked to make recommendations to the city council for socially responsible investments, and I know we talked about that. I, at one point, and I'll give this to Ms. Logo, it needs to be copied, I'm afraid, I sort of put this into writing, how, how such a policy could be enacted under the legislative terms that are outlined here. And basically, unless there are any questions, that's, that's what I've got.
Thank you for doing that.
All right.
Help us move this forward. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other, anyone else from the committee? Do you want to speak, or are you all, you've all spoken? Okay, we'll move on to other public comments then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Voting or not voting?
No, we're, we've moved past voting. This is just general public comments. Anybody, you can go, Mr. Sherman.
Hi, Mark Sherman on Hancock. I was reading a work session item, item, agenda item number six, subsection five, dealing with public comments, and had some suggestions concerning the proposed procedures for showing videos or PowerPoints, as I would like to do at some point. First, I suggest that the term videos or PowerPoint be replaced by visual or audiovisual material, to incorporate those who might want to show a single image, and to avoid the use of a trademark term like PowerPoint. Secondly, where it says, requires permission by the mayor at least twenty-four hours before a meeting, the mayor would have to have that request in hand, so it doesn't specify when the request should be received by the mayor such that she can rule on it. So really, what's needed there is a deadline for submission to the mayor, and then when the mayor acts on that request is, is another issue. So that should perhaps be reworded, and you could start by saying requests to show visual or audio materials must be submitted to the mayor at least twenty-four hours before the meeting. And I would also suggest that the term, the digital file, include in addition, the digital file or a link to the digital file, because some files are too large to send by email, particularly if you created an audiovisual item. So, and I look forward to discussion, and I'll send further comments by email. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Sherwood. I live on Grand Avenue, and I have some comments about the items relating to the schools, planning for the schools. I see that the city manager is going to make a presentation tonight, and I read the letter, and I'm very pleased that she's kind of kept up with that. I hope, I'm convinced that she has kept up with it, even though it's an extremely complicated issue, and I'm not sure I can understand it fully from, from the letter, but that has to do with planning for possible alternative sites. I hope she gets a response to those questions, and I'm glad she asked those questions. I'm concerned with a very related issue, which is the planning for the Piney Branch Elementary School classroom additions. I've been, the whole community has been trying to follow that process, that planning process for a couple of years now, and we've been advised several times that the Montgomery County Public Schools wants to have citizen participation and is interested in input, and yet every once in a while, the gears seem to slip, and things kind of spring forward, and we're surprised by some of the things that they decide internally. And for example, when they decided it might be a good idea to run all the new traffic coming down Grand Avenue. And so I would just like to encourage the city council to try its best to follow, the city, to follow what's going on. city, to follow what's going on on the classroom additions project as well, and find out where that is. I noticed that Ike Leggett's proposed fiscal '19 capital budget for the county includes the Piney Branch Classroom additions projects sometime over the next four or five years, but I didn't see any specifics. So Suzanne suggested maybe that was a placeholder, and if it's a placeholder, I guess that's fine, and it's related to these other kinds of planning. But you never know with these things. It can, I'm just worried that at some point, somebody will say, oh, yeah, the county executive's budget was based upon some plan that has already been finalized, and so we have to go forward with that. So let us know. Please keep us aware. As you remember, we got a big citizens turnout when we talked about the new traffic up and down Grand Avenue. We can mobilize, we can send letters, we can do all kinds of things if we're aware of what's going on. So please try to keep up to date. And again, thanks for what Suzanne did on the site selection process.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? No one? All right. Then we will move on to council comments. Any council members have comments this evening?
It's cold out.
It's cold out. Councilwoman Circe?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Really quickly, I just want to reiterate how wonderful the Martin Luther King event was on Monday. I definitely want to thank the nearly, I think it was over 100 volunteers that participated in the day of service. So thank you all so much for those who participated. Especially, I want to acknowledge the Tacoma United for Engaged Communities, Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Organizing Committee. They did a wonderful job organizing the event. My colleagues were here as well, serving food and volunteering. The rec department played a key role, and there was also financial support from Cheer and the Tacoma Foundation. So if you didn't get a chance to come out to the event, please, it'll be, again, next year is an annual thing. I want to encourage people to come out and serve and participate on Martin Luther King, but also come out, enjoy some good food, watch the kids sing, and just have a really fun time and fellowship. So that's all I have to share.
Councilwoman Dabala?
Yeah, to add on that, there were at least 100 between the morning and the afternoon at Dorothy's Woods alone. So thank you to all those folks who came out, including Cub Scout PAC 33, and thanks to the Public Works Department for picking up the mountain of trash that they collected in the course of their two hours on the site. It was, I saw the pictures, it was quite a pile. And on the food drive, that was also very successful this year, so thanks to all the folks who donated for that. And it's not, it hasn't been a dull week, once again, in Ward Two. So I just want to touch on a couple of things. The city manager will talk about where we are with Long Branch Lego and the Washington Gas work. I want to mention a public hearing on Thursday, January 25th, for a proposed two-house subdivision at the corner of Ethan, Allen, and Jackson, which has been the subject of discussion for at least a year that I know about. And rather than go into detail, if anyone in the neighborhood has comments or questions, email me, and I'll get the information and the links to you, so you can look at the plans and figure out what you want to say, or if you want to just drop a note to the county planning board. Finally, I'd like to ask, on behalf of myself and Councilmember Kovar, that there be either a work session or perhaps just straight to a resolution for a proposal that we want to put forth to follow on the county's footsteps in adopting, in supporting renewable portfolio standards for the state, to increasing, for increasing them, speaking of legislative priorities, and to recognize that the county has set a fairly ambitious goal, and to hopefully affirm with this new council that we're going to charge ahead on the Sustainable Energy Action Plan that we already have. So that's our request. Thank you.
Thank you. And it will be on the agenda very soon. Thank you very much for drafting that. Councilmember Smith?
First, I would like to thank Washington Adventist University for inviting me to give remarks at their prayer breakfast yesterday for the MLK celebration. I was joined by a number of ministers in the area. I'm not a minister, so I tried my best to give some comments that I think resonated with all the people that attended. It was, a lot of students were there, and faculty and the administration of the university. I want to remind my colleagues that tomorrow, Tacoma Park and Prince George County's Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, we're having our joint meeting here. It starts at 6:30. We'll have dinner. The actual meeting will start at 7:00. This is a chance for, I guess these are the two largest municipalities in the state, to get together and discuss our local and state legislative priorities. And if you saw the emails that came out with the PSAs on restoration of highway user revenue, please share them with residents. We're trying to make a huge push this year to get that money back for the 157 municipalities in the state of Maryland. I would like to congratulate my brother-in-law, who was recently elected mayor of Lawrence Township in New Jersey. The town was originally called Maidenhead Township, and it was founded in 1697, but they changed their name to Lawrence Township in 1816. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I want to express my appreciation for everybody who spoke during the public comment period. Good Ward One turnout. My colleague on my left mentioned the resolution. In fairness, she did most of the work in drafting it, but what else is new, right? I'm hanging on with that, but we both want that to happen. I think it'll be a really great thing for us to take up soon, just to send a signal to the people working on that proposal to increase the share of the energy portfolio that's renewable, those who are working on that in Indianapolis, that we agree with them. So I appreciate that. A couple of other points I wanted to make for the city manager, two things, actually. A lot of people, and I know we've talked about this in the past, and you may even have some information on the website, but it would be helpful if you could, either now or later, just remind us the steps that are taken to try to use the appropriate amount of salt around. You did know. And I want people to know, I hear from people who want less use, which I think is a very legitimate thing, given the concerns about the impact on the water supply in particular, as well as pets, but I also hear from people who want roads cleared even sooner, and so that's a tough thing to balance. So I don't know if there's anything to say now, if you just want to follow up later. Okay. Two other brief things. I met recently with some folks who live near the intersection of Philadelphia Avenue and Park, and if you can imagine that, you're driving up from this building, heading toward the fire station, you peel off onto Park, it's a one-way street. It's really more of a split like this as opposed to a turn. There's not really adequate crosswalk marking there. And this is something that's come up previously, I believe, we're looking at potentially getting some funding from the council of governments to try to make that safer for pedestrians. This group, which included some people with an engineering background, have come up with a little proposal and a drawing, and I'm just going to hand that to you, if you wouldn't mind to check it out with Public Works. And it seems like anytime anything comes up in Tacoma Park, there's an expert who can do things about it. So I literally had a gentleman who lives at that intersection, whose job is designing intersections to make them safer for pedestrians, believe it or not. The last thing I wanted to mention, just briefly, people are very familiar with our friend and neighbor, Pat Rumbaugh, also known as the Play Lady. She was recently awarded the 2018 Youth Learning Institute's Youth Development Practitioner Award, and that's affiliated with Clemson University. She's going to be going down there to receive it. I'm not going to read all the bullet points, but the key one, I think, is that the winner should demonstrate positive impact on the lives of young people and lead by example, which I think Pat does. So I just thought folks who know her and the programs that Let's Play America are involved in might want to know that she had gotten that accolade. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I want to echo my colleagues' thanks to the volunteers and organizers, as well as the MC, for the MLK Day events. It was really wonderful to see a large turnout, and it was great to have the opportunity to serve food to people and to listen to the kids sing while we were there, as well as participate in the service projects that day. If I can ask a quick question of the city manager as well, related to salt. I just got a question from a resident related to Gooty Avenue and salt, and she was wondering if Gooty had been salted or not. It seemed pretty slippery still, so if you wouldn't mind just checking it out.
We'll pass that along.
Thank you, that would be great. And then I just wanted to give a brief update. Today, I had an opportunity to attend my first council of government's transportation planning board meeting, and, excuse me, we passed a couple of items that I think are of interest to the community and my fellow colleagues. We are working on, and I'm still trying very much to get up to speed on it all myself, but we are working on a long-range planning project for transportation in the metropolitan area called Visualize 2045. And we today approved a couple of non-motorized vehicle initiatives that will be involved in the visualizing of what we would like to see in the future, which I thought was a really positive step forward, including looking at improvements to the National Capitol Trail, as well as focusing on pedestrian and bike improvements around transit stations so that people can easily walk to and bike to transit stations. We also had somewhat less positive vote that myself and councilmember from Greenbelt and our councilmember-at-large, Mark Elrich, all opposed, but the others were supportive of, related to some projects we're going to look at, to do an air quality, Cog is going to do an air quality analysis of. And several of those are the, from MDOT, are the toll lanes on adding new toll lanes to I-270 and I-495, which we all expressed some concern about and would like to see things focused more on public transit and less on those lanes. So that's something maybe we can just keep an eye on as a council and a community. I think that's something to be aware of. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I know everyone has congratulated each other and the committee and all the volunteers on the Martin Luther King Celebration on Monday, but my wife wanted me to let the community know that Adventist Community Services had received over 200 pounds of food donated during the event. So she wanted me to express her thanks and appreciation to the community. The other thing I wanted to let people know is that Pat Lovelace, our official peace delegate, is not with us tonight because he is now seeking a new person to help him get here on council nights. The man who has brought him down by wheelchair for the past many months has moved out of the city, and so he's now looking for someone again to help him get down here for our meetings. He's one of our most faithful attendees here at the council meetings. But he did want me to let you know that he was not slacking. He attended the, was part of the parade in Anacostia and represented the city there with his big peace sign that he carries. And so he's still active and recovering from his, recovered from his gallbladder surgery that he had a couple of weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Siemens. Just a couple of updates. I also want to thank everyone for the MLK Day, the volunteer events and the community potluck, and just let people know that there were a number of community awards that were given out that night, and our captain, Collington, received his award for his work in the community, as did Mr. Garing, who is a teacher at Tacoma Park Middle School, helps with our Snow Angel program, as well as he has stepped in as the interim adult advisor for our youth council, and we really was instrumental in helping us get that up and running this fall. In addition, Gladys Harvey also received an award, and many of you may know Gladys, particularly on election days, because she keeps us all warm and fed with her chili and homemade banana bread. So we were very glad on Monday night to lift up those members of our community. Some other things to let you know, I was speaking with the folks at Crossroads, and they mentioned that in 2013, they received a summer youth through the city's Summer Youth Employment Program that we started a number of years ago and continues. The person, the intern that they got that summer was so successful that she continued working with them part-time over the years and has just secured a full-time position at the Tacoma Co-op. So they let us know that that helped really start this young person's career, to learn the skills and get the training she needed while we're at Crossroads. And then I just really want to thank our Nuclear Free Committee for keeping on top of this. I think some of the information you gave us tonight is actually newer information that Ms. Tucker handed out, that, and I look forward to also reviewing the information on sustainable investing. And we will make sure to keep you updated on how the meeting goes with the consultant. So thank you again for your time on this. And anytime you want to come talk to the council, we'll definitely, we'll put you on the agenda, and you don't have to worry about the buzzer. So just let us know next time. I'll turn it over to the city manager now.
Thank you. I'll start out just mentioning a little bit about salt. I'm not sure if it's up on the website. I forgot to check to see if we've got our kind of frequently asked questions about salt and sand. The city uses the same mix that is used by the county and the state. It's all from the same source, and that's what our machinery is geared towards. One of the things that's difficult about Tacoma Park is that we're pretty hilly and pretty small, narrow rights of way, and so the specificity of how thin or evenly the salt-sand mixture goes down is sometimes difficult to control. We try to use the same drivers and the same routes all the time so that they're familiar with where the speed bumps are and other things to help make sure that there aren't just piles of salt or sand out there. But sometimes that does happen. We do try to minimize, we don't like piles. Provided the temperature gets warm enough, we try to follow up with the street sweeper after we do this, after the roads are clear, so as to reclaim as much of that as we can, and so it does not end up going into the creek and that kind of thing. We do care about that. Please, if you do see an area where there has been a pile of sand, just call the Public Works Office or let me know, and we can send some guys over there to help shovel it up. And anybody else who wants to shovel it up is just fine. But we do try to do that balance, and it is a tough thing. It's always a learning issue because sometimes we have new staff and they have to get familiar with the machinery, but they do a pretty good job compared to some of the other jurisdictions around. It's just imprecise.
If someone wanted to shovel it up themselves, what should they do with it? Obviously, not just dump it somewhere, right? Is there?
Well, you know, that's a good question. I would put it in the trash, frankly, but you can, at least if you put it kind of out of the roadway or whatever, and then let the Public Works guys know so they can pick it up, that'd be great.
And that's, we don't want to put that on sidewalks, though, right?
You don't want it on sidewalks.
So I think that's important for people to know.
You don't want it on grass and that kind of thing.
You don't want it on your sidewalk.
It's a more, it's a stronger use of salt than people put down on sidewalks, and it can be deteriorating on sidewalks. Thank you. Councilmember Dabala was talking a little bit about Washington Gas and the Long Branch Lego Neighborhood Association issues there. It's been a longtime project from some Washington Gas work in their neighborhood. Unfortunately, it kind of fits and starts, and not enough notice when it starts. Unfortunately, it's kind of in fits and starts, and not enough notice when it starts. And so that caught some of the residents off guard in the past week or so. We have worked to try to let both the contractor for Washington Gas and Washington Gas itself know that we need 72 hours' notice before they close streets, and that it's helpful to, when they block off a street, to block it off at an intersection, not mid-block, which causes difficulty with cars having to turn around. I think the more serious issue has been that there's been a number of instances where people have smelled gas, and people would then, you know, try to call Washington Gas or that kind of thing to say they smell gas. If people smell gas, they should call 911 and ask for the fire truck to come. We don't want a dangerous situation. I do know that Washington Gas has repaired at least one of the cracked lines where the gas smell was generating from, but anytime we smell that, we need to report it and act on it as a serious item. We have tried to get a better working relationship right now with Washington Gas, perhaps have a community meeting as the neighborhood wishes to have. We have asked Congressman Jamie Raskin's office to assist us in getting that meeting. So we'll continue to work on it. We've had a pretty good working relationship with Washington Gas in the past, but just, this one just didn't work right, so we want to get that right. I want to announce that on next Monday night, which is very soon, there's a community dialogue meeting being announced about the dockless bike share program, and I know a number of people have opinions about it. So Montgomery County, Hans Reamer, and the County Department of Transportation are having a, they're calling it a community dialogue. It is, I don't see the, 7:00 to 8:30 at the Silver Spring Civic Center in the main great hall. I urge people to attend who have, who want to make recommendations about how that pilot program that's underway is going. I particularly hope that there are people who have used the bikes that can say what works and what doesn't work, as well as people who get annoyed by where they might be dumped or that kind of thing. So I do urge that input on this pilot program be shared at this hearing, and you can always share it through other ways, but I do urge people to put in the word for that. It is a time when a number of us will be in a meeting, so we're not going to be able to attend, but we will have a staff person there to hear the comments from Tacoma Park residents. Following up on the comments about Martin Luther King's event, Day and Event, we did have the Empty Bowls effort also, which was a way to raise money for people and to identify that there's hungry people in our community. And we had folks, recreation, youth in our different recreation programs make these bowls and decorate the bowls and sell them for at least $20. All 30 bowls that were made were sold, and it raised about $690. That also then goes to Adventist Community Services for their food services. And our rec staff had a good time doing it. I think it was a nice effort, a nice strength effort. I'm just noting that coming up, it's budget time, so we're all hunkered down. We do have the two council retreats coming up through the next week, but I wanted to make a general announcement that residents don't need to wait till March or April to make your comments heard about budget and priorities, and that the ALKs can reach out to you, especially as you're thinking of priorities over the coming week, and on smaller budget items either to me or to you, so that we know what people are thinking about and can address them as we make our presentation. So it says that I make my presentation to you on April 4th, but if there's something that you want in there beforehand, it's fine to say something, and I do encourage people to share. That's all for me.
Great. Any questions this evening for the city manager? I have one request, and one just to reiterate again how I think the city manager comments and having them posted on the website, just a reminder that they are posted after the meeting. Given the large projects that we have coming up this year, Flower Avenue, Ethan Allen, library renovation, Tacoma Junction redevelopment, I know we've added, you have added a section where you do hiring updates.
[laughing].
And not to make this, not to make this so huge, but I think for those projects, even if we're just putting, if there's nothing new but putting the link to the project page each week, I think would be beneficial to keep it front of mind for all of us and then...
We'll try something like that.
Yeah, then residents have it right there.
Right. Anybody can always go to the project pages, but if there's, especially if there's something to highlight, it'd be nice to share.
Great. Awesome. All right. We'll go to our voting session now. Let's go to our first is our resolution adopting our 2018 legislative priorities. We held a work session on this last week, and I believe it was Councilmember Kovar's, some additions he had requested, just to review. And again, if you would like to see the larger presentation of this, we walked through it the evening in December when we had our D-20 delegation here, so we went much more in-depth on each of them, these priorities, than we will this evening. But the first priority is additional funding for the expansion and renovation of the library. As we had, as Ms. Robb and Ms. Pierceall raised earlier during public comments, we are asking or just, at this point, raising the awareness for our delegation of, oh, sorry, the first one, next, on the Tacoma Junction, and looking at that as we move forward. Thank you to Mr. Kovar for adding the additional language while recognizing that the road runs through a historic district, so we keep that front and center as we have these conversations. The other priority is support for state highway improvements to New Hampshire Avenue, restoration of highway user revenue, assistance with the impacts of businesses and housing affordability from the Purple Line construction and school construction funding. Those are the legislative priorities that we have discussed and will be voting on this evening. If someone would like to move the resolution?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens, would someone like to second?
Second.
Councilmember Smith. Discussion, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and thank you for adding those items. I just want to say a few words about those two points, and this follows up on what Ms. Pierceall and Ms. Robb were talking about. I think there may be some pretty modest reconfiguring, from my understanding of the junction project that could end up being required, for example, around the lay-by, if that's the way we handle the deliveries going forward, curb cuts and things of that nature, maybe something with the lights and the crosswalks. I personally wasn't imagining a major reconfiguring, but I think the point is, whatever work we do there should appropriately take into account that it's a historic district and that there are historic preservation issues that are relevant, and so I appreciate that language being added. And on the fifth bullet point, the impact connected to the Purple Line, obviously there's an expectation, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but there's an expectation that as the Purple Line goes forward, there'll be an economic impact particularly on the part of the city along New Hampshire Avenue, but it could affect other areas as well. And based in part on the presentation that we saw from our contractor that prepared the Economic Development and Affordable Housing Strategic Plan, it's evident that there's the potential there for both positive economic development, but also further challenges in terms of preserving affordable housing within the city. And so I think I'm a supporter of the Purple Line, but as that goes forward, I think we just need to ensure that, to the extent there's assistance available from the state, that it focus on both economic development and impact on business and housing affordability. So I'm stating what's there, but I'm just explaining why I had asked for that, and I appreciate the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I want to echo Councilmember Kovar's comments regarding the point related to the Tacoma Junction intersection, and I want to thank Ms. Robb and Ms. Pierceall for your input today. I think I can understand why it was read that way, but why you saw it that way. And it was not something I think we as a council were thinking about, thinking about in the way that you did. So I think Councilmember Kovar's addition really helps to address that a little bit and make it clear that we do want to do this in a way that is historically, that, you know, acknowledges the historicness of the intersection and it takes that into account. And also, I also want to add that related to the reconfiguring, I think, as Councilmember Kovar said, I think it could be something as simple as, you know, a stoplight change or a lane related to the lay-by, or it could be something more substantial. So I think we're very much in the exploration, research phase, and we have our own traffic study that we're doing that will help inform some of that. So I don't think by any means we're looking at what SHA has put out and saying that that's what we want to do and that's what we want to advocate for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I would ask the city manager to ask Jeremy Dickie to provide any assistance that he can on the HUR legislative priority, to have some type of call of action to residents, to call, write, email, text Mike Miller and Mike Bush to ask for a vote on this issue. I don't, if we can't get it done this year, I don't see us being able to do it, because 2020, the state's going to start running deficits. So I think this is the year.
We certainly recognize this as a...
And if we can get the residents behind it, that'd be great.
Councilwoman Dabala?
Yeah, these changes look great to me. I just wanted to address a point that some residents have brought up to me. These are the priorities for the city's legislative advocate for pushing on issues that we know are important. They're largely financial issues. I think that's a really good priority in a year with a lot of changing fiscal priorities at all the different levels of government. That doesn't mean if it's not on this list that it's not important.
Right.
There'll be, I want to confirm that there'll be a session, once the bills are all introduced, where we'll go through and we'll identify those issues that are important and those bills that are important.
We'll have multiple sessions, and if we haven't taken a position on it in the past, then we'll pass a resolution.
Great.
Some bills, we will designate one of us to actually spend the day in Annapolis and testify. I think Councilmember Kovar did that a great deal last year on the Trust Act and a number of other things. Other times, we will just send a letter in addition to that. So we will probably start doing that in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No more comments or discussions? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that's the resolution. Next, we have the resolution regarding a request of TJ Beer and Wine and Liquor for Sunday sales. We had the work session on this last week. I don't think there were any changes.
There weren't any changes. There's no new information. I did double-check with the police department if there was any other information that they were concerned about related to this. I believe some information was passed on to council, but in any event, on this particular item, there were no changes.
Correct. All right. Would someone like to pass this, please?
Introduce it.
Move it. Sorry. Move it. Councilwoman Seersey, second. Councilwoman Kostick, all right. Any more conversation or discussion of this? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Any abstaining? Okay. Six yes, one no. Next, we have the consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
So move.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dabala, since there are single reading ordinances in this, I think we need a roll call?
Correct.
All right.
Councilmember Kostick?
Aye.
Councilmember Seersey?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dabala?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to our work session. The first is a discussion of Montgomery County Public Schools Site Selection for the new elementary school. I just want to, I think Mr. Sherwood left this evening, just agree with Mr. Sherwood and thank the city manager for an excellent letter on this issue that was pretty quickly put together, given the schedule that MCPs set for this project. So we'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you. I briefly mentioned this last week. Just in November, the Board of Education had asked the superintendent to look at the options of possibly having a new elementary school in this general area as a way to have that on the plate while they were considering a number of expansion proposals on this upcoming CIP of elementary schools, because the number of students in this area is growing very rapidly. We also have, as you know, relatively small school sites, and Piney Branch Elementary School has a smaller school site, and there is no room for portables on that site, so it has been an area of concern. The city was asked to have a representative on an advisory committee, and I asked Ross Grisby from our Housing and Community Development Department to sit on that because it seemed like it was primarily related to kind of planning issues and knowledge of what else is going on in our community related to demographics and that kind of thing. I know that there were representatives of parent-teacher associations and a number of community associations that were asked to participate. As it was, though, there was a sense that this was, should be something that would happen really fast, and in fact, at the first meeting, the idea was that it could be over in a meeting. And it finally came up with a total of three meetings to identify and evaluate a number of sites to see if something might be considered as appropriate for an elementary school. We had a number of concerns after Ms. Grisby went to the first meeting. She came back and said, you know, they've got some sites, but they didn't have some very basic information. Some of the information that seemed to be really useful would be where do students live? Instead, the information was which schools are overcrowded? And that has some sense of location, but it doesn't have a precise sense of location. That really more depended on how the boundary for the various schools or what the kinds of programs are at these schools. And so that information was never provided. In the three meetings, after repeated requests, that information was not provided. Similarly, we had a lot of concern that we wanted to make sure that private sites, not just public sites, would be considered. And we, there were several sites in the Tacoma Park area that were considered. The MCPs did not want to publicize the location of those sites because they're privately owned. And so the discussions about them were limited, and there was a sense that because they were privately owned, they must cost money to purchase, and therefore they would be less desirable as potential sites. And I may just be summarizing that, but that was, that was just kind of the gut feeling for how expensive some of these various sites are, really was on the initial cost of the property. Many of the properties on the, in this area that were listed as public properties were parks, and we don't have very much parkland in the Tacoma Park area, and we had real concerns that there are costs to taking parks. There are the costs of losing parkland that our children need and we need for play and green views and health. But also, often when there's parkland, if you take it from one place, you need to create and buy land to make parkland somewhere else, and that wasn't being figured into the cost elements either. Basically, the committee was asked to, they had a fairly limited way to vote on the various attributes that, of these various sites. They did do that. There were two public sites that kind of came out at the top of the list that were announced publicly in the meeting, but then they didn't want us to talk about. Both of those sites are outside of the Beltway, so they are not close to us. And the information about the private sites has not yet been divulged. There is supposed to be a report that's issued from this committee that would provide presumably that information. Then members of the committee can write a minority report, and the public can have, there's like a 30-day time for community response, to public response to that report. there's like a 30-day time for community response, to public response to that report. And so, when those things come out, when the report comes out, we'll see how to handle that. Because I was concerned that a number of these issues weren't being addressed, and because the activities of this committee were over the holidays, when the council wasn't in session, and when some people were away, were not paying attention to every email that they get, and that there was actually very little public publicity about these meetings that was done, I wrote the letter to the superintendent, saying I had some deep concerns about this, and to help alert him that it would be very useful to have the information about where do children live, the issue that Tacoma Park has, which is more than two sides of our boundary are not in Montgomery County. So, we don't have spill-over place. Everybody needs to go north and, kind of, north and west from us as our student population would increase, and we have interest in building and redeveloping New Hampshire Avenue, which would potentially bring more students to the east side of our community. So, anything that we're doing kind of sets a domino effect of schools. The committee reps would say, no, we're not here to talk about redistricting. Well, our kids would have to go somewhere. And once you start moving kids, you're talking busing, and that's an ongoing expense, as well as being detrimental to our efforts to have walking schools that you can walk to or attend P T A meetings at and all of that kind of thing. I did get a response from a person in the Chief Operating Officer's Office of M C P S. And at first, it was a very concerned response that the information on the sites would be shared before the report is out. I said I would not publicly talk about the sites that were announced in their public meeting, but, and that I heard actually from Tom Huckers' office about. But I did go over the items. I said we have legitimate concerns about the process and about the information that's been shared, and considering that, you know, this is something that could have some fairly significant impacts on our, on the school plans for Piney Branch Elementary School, et cetera, I'd like to have them taken seriously. I did get a response several days later from her, saying, kind of, oh, yes, we're considering your comments. So, I think there might have been some political pressure about that. I do, I guess one of the things that I'm concerned about here is that the C I P is going to be coming up before the county council, and the Board of Education is going to be hearing this. What does this really mean for our schools? One of the questions that I asked Ms. McGuire, who had called me, was if these schools are chosen outside of the Beltway, then that seems to mean that you would need to go forward with a fairly large addition to Piney Branch Elementary School. And she said, yes, that's probably what that means. I think that that has a real need for community discussion. To me, we still haven't heard about some of the, we have two either vacant or almost vacant sites that used to be schools in this community that aren't being publicly discussed by, that may be good sites for a school. I said, these are sites where the residents actually, you know, have embraced schools because they've lived next to schools. And I guess my concern is that that discussion really hasn't been a public one, and I wanted to bring this information to you so that you knew it. I included in the packet, and there was some mix-up on the online version that has been corrected, about the capacity of the three schools that are most affected to us, Tacoma Park Elementary, Piney Branch Elementary, and Rolling Terrace Elementary Schools. So, in the package that you have, it's correct, and online now, it's correct. But it shows projections for how many, you know, how many students would be in those schools over the next few years, and it also shows the racial makeup of those schools. And one of the points that I made is that with the council having a racial equity focus, part of this is who actually really gets hurt if we're not providing for the students in this area and we're ending up busing kids north of the Beltway. And so, I, whether or not that's the answer they come up with, a lot of questions were raised that I think are quite serious. Normally, the council doesn't get heavily involved in school, kind of, school policy issues. This is a different issue. It's a land development issue in our community, and it's very much kind of a life, you know, condition of life situation for Tacoma Park. So, I, that's the information I have. I have information online. I really appreciate Ms. Grisby pulling the information and keeping it up to date on the website, when the school district still does not have information about this process on their website. But I'm happy to answer questions or take direction from you.
Councilmember Smith?
Maybe you've mentioned this, forgive me if you did. What was the explanation that Montgomery County Public Schools gave to why they would not consider the old or existing school sites within Tacoma Park or just outside?
Well, they, because they're privately owned and they don't want to discuss them privately. They did discuss them in the meeting, and they did vote on them, but the, but the information from that vote was not shared with the committee, so we don't know what that, where that information has gone.
Okay. So, it was, there weren't any constraints about the site? It's just they had some type of meeting and we don't know?
We don't know what, we'll have to wait for the report, I think. Is there anything else? Yeah, I think we'll have to wait for the report and see what the superintendent's take on that is.
Okay. And next steps, do you want us to advocate for the county council? I mean, send a letter to Council President Hans Reimer?
Well, certainly I have, I mean, a number of people have seen the letter that I wrote to the superintendent.
Right.
And that is posted on the website. I think there's a certain amount of waiting until the report comes out before anything formal is done. That doesn't mean that you can't ask questions of our council, county council representatives and the school board representatives about, you know, what are they expecting out of this? I really am curious what the Board of Education is thinking, because they had a charge to this committee, and I think because the way that the criteria were presented to the committee, they got flawed results. They just didn't get enough information out of the advisory committee.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation and for the letter that you wrote. I think it really outlines a lot of the problems with the process. And from my view, I see that there are kind of two separate issues here, and one of them is that the process really doesn't seem like it's going to result in something positive for Tacoma Park, in terms of where, you know, creating schools that students can walk to, that families can walk to, and have a community feel. I agree with you with the issues regarding us being at the edge of our county and new development happening in the Crossroads area, and those students not being able to have any option but to go one direction and into Tacoma Park, you know, into the heart of Tacoma Park for their schools. So, I also, separate from that, I think there's another issue, which is the process. And I think it's obviously been a very flawed process and not a process that we would like to see, or I personally would like to see, moving forward with other projects that they do. So, I think, I think there's sort of two separate issues that are related, but both really important. And I would like to see us weigh in and kind of give some guidance as a council on what the problems that we see with this and what we feel like is necessary as, necessary for our community. So, I know you mentioned that we don't typically get involved with school issues. I wonder if maybe you can address that a little bit, if there's some history related to that.
Well, we have it sometimes. Sometimes there've been legislative items that, well, the school should teach a certain subject, add this to their curriculum, or that kind of thing. That, to me, we have, the council has weighed in on some of those things, but in general, they don't. Because, but this is a land development, and it really ends up being an important part of our master plan, kind of, for our community. So, it's in a different category than kind of internal school policy. I also want to say that I've worked with the school district for many years, and I was involved with them actually when they had to do the redistricting after unification. And they handled that very well, and there was a public, there were a lot of public processes, and they had a system. And so, it's really obvious it's not here, when I have seen it work well on some other cases. Even frankly, the facility planning for Piney Branch Elementary School was a fairly open public process.
So, it seems like the next steps are, Ms. Grisby is going to file the minority report?
I assume so, yeah.
And then, do you have a sense of when the, when the report will be public?
They keep saying soon.
Okay.
You know, the council may want to hold the time on your upcoming agenda for a resolution, but I don't know what the timing is on that.
Okay. Yeah, well, I would just ask my fellow councilmembers to consider moving forward with a resolution on that.
Yeah, I think holding a space on upcoming agenda for a resolution regarding this, once we see the report. In addition, I'd ask the city manager, I noticed that we sent this to the superintendent's office, the letter, but I think we should also forward it on to the Board of Ed and our county council members to see it as well. As well, you know what? We might as well send it to the local principals, too.
Okay.
Because I think keeping them informed of, including Rolling Terrace, what we're doing in terms of the schools is, would be helpful as well. So, I think if we forward the letter there and then follow Councilwoman Kostick's advice, and we'll stick something on an agenda in the future. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Ledlow, for a good letter. Just a couple of questions. On the parklands that have been proposed to be used, do those vary from case to case in terms of what restrictions there might be on it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because, for example, I know there, I think Jessup Blair maybe was mentioned, was mentioned on there.
Well, S S I Park, which is right on.
Yeah, S S I Park, yeah. So, that's county-owned, and do we know if that's restricted in some way?
You know, that's probably not restricted, because it used to be a school, but it's not, it may not be respected, restricted as dedicated parkland under the state provisions, where you would have to have an offsetting thing, but it certainly is used by the public as a park. And so, you know, there may be a moral, there may be a moral case to be made for protecting.
But like Jessup Blair has covenants attached to it.
That's right. There's some that have covenants. But, for example, there were, there was parkland on there that, you know, part of Slicko Creek. There was the, the golf course was proposed. There was, there were sites on there that were already approved for development by the county, so there's no way they could be used.
You mean for other purposes?
For other purposes. And so, the staff did not even check with the county agencies first to find out were some of these sites even available, in their mind. And in fact, a number of the park properties were taken off the list after park and planning strongly objected.
So, Mr. Sherwood, and maybe others, mentioned this question about the effort to try to expand Piney Branch, and I think you talked about that, but is there any, I mean, is that something where we just have to kind of wait to see what's going to happen? I mean, the fact that the county executive has some funding?
The county executive in.
Piney Branch, we don't know how definitive that is either, right?
Right. It's in the proposed C I P, there's, I think, $4.2 million for expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School. The first year is, I'm not sure, a half million dollars or something for planning, so it's still in the planning stage, and that would be for F Y nineteen planning. I think that's probably needed, no matter what. The out-years, it was a very vague description. It did reference the need for at least five more classrooms. And I did not have a chance to get through to anybody to see were they looking at a particular model or not.
But presumably, five extra classrooms doesn't resolve the need for.
It does not resolve the Tacoma Park need. It just resolves the immediate issue at Piney Branch.
So, there's no real answer to this last question, but I guess maybe it's more of an observation. If you look at the map that accompanied the material and the different colors and so on, and green means you have a surplus, and the other end of the spectrum means you have a deficit. So, there's a lot more deficits.
There's a lot more deficits.
Down in our part of the county.
That's right.
So, what, I mean, should we feel paranoid about that? Or what do you think explains that?
Well, I mean, I think it does raise the issue. I mean, you have on your lobbying list about money for schools. I think it raises the issue that, that more attention is going to have to be paid because we're already densely developed area, and so, school sites are going to cost more. Though, you know, there is around, one of the areas right north of the Beltway, there's an area that shows pretty deep red, but they have room to move around among the various schools, so that you could redistrict perhaps, or do some improvements and handle that. We don't have room to move. Our boundaries are county boundaries.
Right.
And so, that's, you know, part of this is looking at, we're at the hard part.
But I mean, it does seem like we're sort of subject to chronic under-projections of enrollment.
Well, and one of the things, in speaking with Ms. McGuire on the phone, she mentioned that they are contracting with somebody else to try to get better enrollment projections, because I did mention that, you know, they, the school district has admitted that they had undercounted and missed the fact that we had much, many more students on, coming into the schools in this area. And, you know, so they kind of acknowledged that they need to do a better job of that.
I would support the resolution also, so thanks for that suggestion. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah, I would support a resolution on this, but I wanted you to just, I wanted to make sure I understood this. You said that they're doing this plan for new schools, but they're not going to do any redistricting? They didn't want to discuss redistricting. They didn't want to discuss it. Within the committee. But the, but they were using the current district, districting to say that this school's overcrowded and that school isn't. That's why we were trying to urge them to look more at the actual, where the residents live, where the students are coming from.
Any other questions on this? All right. We will keep this on our list and come back to it.
And I want to thank Ross. She did a great job on representing the city.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grisby. Okay, our next item is a discussion of charter member, and yes, I see our city attorney over there. I will turn over to our city attorney in a moment. Just to kind of give some background, this topic came up last year, right as we were beginning the process to select a new police chief. And we wanted to make sure that after we went through our process for the police chief, that we revisited in our charter the language regarding how the city council may provide input to hiring decisions by the city manager. The prior city council did have a work session on this on October 25th, since that was the city council that was dealing with these issues at that time. What is in the packet, option A is what the city council, the prior city council, discussed and decided to move forward to us, the current city council, for consideration. Option B is alternative language suggested by the city attorney, and I'll let him speak in a moment. For tonight, this is a work session. Our goal this evening is to get closer to language that we want to vote on and then move forward with the process of a charter change. So, I'll let the city attorney, and then maybe the city manager, say a few words on this, and then we'll open up for conversation.
Okay. So, what the, either option A or option B, I mean substantively, they're essentially the same, would, they define the role of the city council in the personnel or employee selection process. The way the charter currently reads, arguably, it could be interpreted as, you know, precluding the council from having any input, which I don't think is the correct reading, but that's, but that's possible to read it. that's possible to read it that way. And option A is essentially the, the language developed at the October 25th council work session and supported by a majority of the council. And option B, I tweaked the language slightly after having some time to think about it. And essentially, the, the change that I suggested is that the city manager would request input from the council in writing so that it's clear, kind of the scope of the input she's requesting and the timeline and format for providing the input so that it's not kind of a never-ending process and it's, so that it's, you know, it's clear what the city manager is asking for. But substantively, it's, it's the same type of input. Either the, the council can always provide desired characteristics, knowledge, skills and abilities of a good candidate, and then the city manager can ask for additional input from the council.
But the city manager doesn't have to accept these?
Pardon me?
The city manager doesn't have to accept our requests, right?
Well, the city manager ultimately makes the selection. I mean, they would, see, but ignore the council's input at their own risk.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if it's, it could be an individual council member, but it could be a council action for more council members. But if an individual council member wants a request, the city manager doesn't have to recognize our request, right?
That's correct.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would the city manager like the same?
Sure. I appreciate that. The, I believe that the issue that came up originally was that there was concern by the council that the actual language that was in the charter meant that I couldn't ask you advice or your thoughts and you couldn't give it to me and that that, either way, was a violation of the charter. And it may or may not be that. When going through the police chief selection process, to me, it's valuable to hear what you're thinking is. I appreciated the resolution that you passed that talked about the kinds of characteristics that you wish to see and thought were important in the police department and in a police chief. That, to me, is important information. I also would like to reserve the right to, when I'm just talking with you, bounce some ideas off of you because I value you as colleagues. On the other hand, I think it's really important that I be the one to make the choice and that I be the one to either hire or fire and discipline employees. The, there are things that I may know that aren't information, you know, that isn't information that I can actually share. There may be personnel information that I can't actually share with you. Or there may be, and I think there often is, needs that I may have as a manager that you're not aware of in terms of how you manage in a particular office or a particular thing. And so I do think it's important for a city manager to reserve the right to make that final decision, recognizing that ultimately, the council can hire and fire the city manager and that's, that's the oversight. I'm very pleased that, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with councils that are thoughtful and caring and, and professional in the way they look at things. Not all councils are, not all city managers may be good. I mean, there's all of those things in the future that could happen, but I would like to be able to see this language be permissive language that says the city manager may ask for input and that the council may give it. And so that's, that's what I would like to see. I would not like to see specific language about the police chief in here or a particular position in here. I think that that, I think that that starts to go down a slippery slope and of the various positions. I'm not sure the police chief is the one that I would choose if I were a city council person to say I needed to have some input on more than others, but in any event, I don't like the idea of calling one position out. That's all I think I have to say at this moment.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Ledlow. All right, I think to organize the conversation on this, let's, we can do general comments on maybe option A and B, and then for our new colleagues, many times what we do in work sessions like this, as we're trying to kind of narrow down language, is at different times we may take hand votes to get a sense of the council to move us on. And so I think for tonight, depending on how our conversation goes, the first hand vote we may take is to see how many folks would select option A or option B, and then whichever one of those gets the majority of us, then work on the specific language of that option.
Actually, Mayor, is there one more thing I can say?
Yep.
One thing that I don't care for is in option B that I didn't address, is the idea of having a written document, written request before I can talk with you. I appreciate, I think, what the city attorney was, was trying to get at in terms of documentation and making things clear. I think that a more informal opportunity is, is important in terms of how we work together.
Thank you. All right. So with that in mind, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Siemens to kick us off.
I thank you so much, Mayor. And I'd like to put this in perspective. As far as I'm concerned, this is kind of the most important topic that I've had come before me since I joined the council in 1999. This has been something that's been a frustration of mine through many years. I've seen, I've worked with many council members and many city managers, and I have seen us hire various police chiefs during my time involved in the community even before And I'd like to give a little bit of historical perspective, but I did want to comment on what Ms. Ledlow said tonight, that I agree with 99% of what you said. There were a couple, a couple of things that I, that I kind of disagree with and I wanted to mention. One is that, that there might be personnel-related things that you can't relate to us. I would hope that as a city council member, you can talk with us about anything. I think we, we certainly do things in confidential meetings when it is personnel-related. But the other thing is the idea that this would not be specific position-related. I think it might be valuable as we get into this that we do specify some level of positions because I, I would, I think it could be, I don't, I don't want to create kind of these unintended consequences, and so I wouldn't want to see the council being involved in giving opinions about every position in the city. So I just mentioned that. Now, I, the reason I am feeling so good about where we are today is not just that we're talking about this, but that we just went through a process in hiring a new police chief that I think went exceedingly well. I think that a great deal of that is due to you. The credit for that is due to you because this worked because you're invested in the community. You are part of this community. You may live across the line and I'm not sure why that happened, but, but, you know, you really clearly have a passion for the city and, and that shows not just in your day-to-day work, but it showed especially well in the hiring of the police chief. And I think that through this process, you bent some of the interpretations of the current city code and allowed the, you were interested in hearing from the city, city council along the way. For one thing, the city council did give you, you know, kind of a list of characteristics that we wanted to see in a police chief, which some could interpret as participating in the, the hiring process. But you also went beyond that. You, you involved community members and subject matter experts and council members in drafting the solicitation to fill the position, for candidates to fill the position, and also in reviewing those candidates, reviewing the resumes and even involved in the interviewing. Now, you didn't have, you know, all of us sitting there interviewing everybody that was coming through, but you did involve us to some extent with a single council member in some of the interviews and also allowing the entire council to at least see some of the video interviews that were accomplished. And, and then you, you listened to feedback on that, right? And that's the kind of process that really, I think that's what made this work so well. Not taking away from your great abilities, but I think that the fact that you were open to all that input really helped you to find the person that you wanted to hire, but it, you know, you, you used us as advisors along with community members and subject matter experts. That's what I want to make sure not only is okay, but I've seen city managers prior to you that did not share that passion for the city, did not share the acceptability of the same type of processes you just used for this. And so I want to not take anything away from you. I want to draft you into this to build a box for the, for the next councils and city managers, the future city, council members and city managers, so that we can increase the probability that we have a good process going on into the future. I feel passionately about the police chief because I think we've done a miserable job there in the past. We've had, hired some great people and I take nothing away from the individuals, but as far as being a police chief that fit with the character of Tacoma Park, I think we've done a miserable job. We also picked some that maybe weren't qualified, but that's a different subject. But I want to see us be able to use a process and not just allow it, but make sure that it's, that the city manager can't say, "Well, I don't want to know what they're thinking, so I can't, I'm not going to request it," right? Whether it be in writing or verbally. I think we need language in here that just makes it a little tighter. I'm not, again, trying to say we should hire the police chief or we should tell you who to hire as a police chief. You know, I want you to feel comfortable when you walk into an ICMA meeting, but, but I also want you to feel comfortable as a Tacoma Park resident, almost resident, you know, going forward in the future. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on this. So my bottom line is, yeah, I, if I pick between A and B on this handout that we have, I pick B. I like the wording that Mr. Sigmund came up with after giving it thought over several months, and I think that moves us in the right direction. I think there's still some problems with that. I don't have specific language, but, you know, I've got some scratch down here, but there are a number of things. There, you know, I think there are, I'm trying to find my spot on here now. Oh, here we go. It says, "Except that the council as a body, one may provide the city manager with characteristics such as experience, knowledge, skills and ability, and that's desired for the person to fill the certain positions." And that's fine with me. I think we, I would feel comfortable with defining those certain positions. If you don't feel comfortable, I want to make you happy because I want you to accept the other things, okay? Two, that may participate in drafting candidate, candidate's solicitation and comment on the finalists prior to hiring and filling positions. And then three, and maybe, may participate in removal decisions to the extent requested by the city manager. And I certainly don't claim to be an attorney of Mr. Sigmund's qualifications, so I'm sure that there is better wording for those things.
Sure. And I've.
Thank you, Council.
I've sat and think about it, but yes, I understand where you're going.
Hey. Would anyone else like to provide general comments and then we'll do a hand vote on option A or B? Or if people are ready to go there, we can do that. All right, well, Councilwoman DeBala, it's her light first, though.
No, you go first.
Okay, whatever. So I'm relatively new to this issue and I'm thinking about it for any, it's hard to imagine, any city manager in the future, any city council in the future of any composition. And I, I agree that I think we want to allow the council a role in higher-level position, personnel issues. Maybe we want to encourage the city manager to ask or the council to offer on some department level, department head level or some, you know, not every staff person in the building, but some level of position. Maybe there's a difference between hiring and firing. One is, is more dicey in terms of confidentiality, the other, I'm not sure. But those are the things I'm thinking about. I, I think there's, I'm leaning towards B. I think there's, Terry started to touch on this, there's maybe a sense of not just the job to be done and what the qualifications are, that's sort of one thing, but there's also the process by which you go about finding candidates. Maybe that's a category that ought to be in, in here. And when it gets to decisions about individuals, that's when I get a little nervous about not wanting to politicize in any way personnel decisions. On the other hand, I'm struggling with whether there's a way to say, "Yeah, the city manager may, they must, they could, they should." I feel like it could be a little stronger as long as there's a, there's a wall there where we don't get into politicizing individual personnel decisions. And I'm not sure how to word that. The only addition I'm pretty sure about is the, something about the process of hiring.
Thank you. Councilman Kovar?
Thank you. I did go back and look at the video because I tend not to remember these things unless I really look closely at it again. And we had a series of hand votes. Three of those council members are now gone, so we can decide for ourselves how, how bonding that is. On the key point, there was a proposal to give the council the power to sign off, to approve a proposed hire, and that was defeated on a four to three vote. And then the second vote, which is what's reflected at the end, paragraph B in both of these, when I looked at it, it was five to two and not four to three. We can go back, a few of the hands were kind of low, but there was support for that. My personal view is that it shouldn't be anything politicizing. I wouldn't want the council to be involved in most decisions. You could possibly make an argument, to have a role in consulting in most hires, maybe you could make an argument that other senior positions could be. But just looking at it with the, with the police, I agree with Congressman Siemens, Congressman.
Oh.
I just, I just elevated you. So we have to do, we have to do whatever you say now.
Not even an election.
We'll tell, we'll tell Jamie or Askin later. With Councilmember Siemens, that the process that we followed recently was really great. I didn't think it was politicized at all and we had a consultative role. And so to me, looking at paragraph B, I think it's okay to say that the city manager shall consult with us. We don't get to. We don't get to pick, but if that seems too restrictive or would hamstring you, or there might be times, situations, when it's really important that the position be filled right away and so on, you could take that paragraph B and play with it a little bit to maybe make it a little better. And I'm just imagining, and I scribbled this down so people can take it for what it is, but something like in paragraph B, "With regard to the selection of a police chief, the city manager shall, to the extent that it is practical and taking into account the timeliness of the appointment and the relevant confidentiality requirements, consult with the council before appointing a person," and then say at the end, "The city manager shall retain full discretion, and the council will have no involvement in any other personnel matters relating to that position following the appointment unless specifically requested by the city manager." So that's saying, hey, you know what, you got to consult, but if there's some reason why it's really pressing, and you don't have to reveal everything about, you know, their past work, and it's really just setting up a situation, I agree. I mean, as long as you're here, I wouldn't worry about it, but you never know who else is going to be there. And I don't think the idea that, well, if the city manager picks someone who's no good, that we can get rid of the city manager. That's a really bad dynamic to set up, because then it's like, you know, I wish, I wish she or he hadn't put that person in, but eh, it's not quite, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say, let's remove the city manager because of that, but now I'm kind of resentful. And then that begins to create a negative dynamic as opposed to, hey, there's a little bit of consultation, we don't get to say who it's going to be, we don't get to be involved in firing, we don't get to be involved in discipling or anything like that. That just strikes me as a way to sort of find ourselves halfway between what's here.
Councilmember Smith.
I would like to associate myself with Councilmember Siemens' comments. You know, I remember when the former city manager, Barb Matthews, went through the police chief selection, and, you know, she didn't want any input or any discussion with council. I appreciate that, you know, you've taken a different tact, a different position on this, but you're not going to be here forever. There will be another city manager, and I think it is important that council has some input into the process. And so what concerns me is how do we codify that? How do we make sure that going forward, council can, you know, give their opinions? Maybe something like we did in this previous iteration of meet and greet, the survey. I don't know the best format, but it's important that council has some input in this process. And finally, why is it in our former government that the city manager only makes the hiring decisions for major department heads? Is there some reason why with the city manager, former government, that that has to be the way it's done, or?
Well, I mean, the major thing is that somebody needs to know who to report to. Ultimately, you know, who's, the specifications for a job and what you're supposed to do is really difficult when you feel like you're reporting to multiple people. And it's hard to keep that, hard to keep that clean in terms of, you know, if there's some disagreement over what the person should be doing. So there's that. You know, one thing, when you talk about codifying, I guess one point that I think I would like to throw out on the table, too, is that what's in the charter is one area that you document things. How you, you know, what your provisions are for hiring, the contract that you might have with the city manager, the goals that you set for the city manager, also are places where you can have much more language about how you think something should work, what a process should be. So again, I prefer that this be less wordy, be pretty clear that it's, the council may weigh in, the city manager may ask. That, to me, it's, that's the simplest form of this, that still also, I think, conveys a need and an expectation that there be some collaboration, but-
But tell me this, if there's another city manager feels that they don't want to collaborate, are we in a position to say that we do collaborate on the police chief?
I think that, I mean, I think that you can put in your, in a resolution that this is what you're, the kind of expectation that you have over the process and the position and those kinds of things, and then, you know, as was raised, the city manager can take that or not to his or her peril. I think, and I do appreciate Councilwoman Kova's comment that it's not that easy necessarily to get rid of a city manager. On the other hand, sometimes it's easier to get rid of a city manager than to make other changes, so those, you know, those things both happen. I don't want to take away from the other councilmembers' time, so, but I did want to, the other thing I guess I want to, I do want to mention a moment is when some of the language was first come out, it did talk about department heads and that kind of thing. I actually wanted to keep that very informal, because if there were even an intern working with you, I would love to talk to you about what you would expect in that position. So it's not a high-level position, but it may be somebody that is going to be working with you. And so to me, having the opportunity to ask you about that makes some sense. So I just, so I, my preference is that it not be specifying higher level or positions or that kind of thing, but that it be left open.
All right.
And just to follow up on what Councilmember Smith said, just to make sure we're all clear, in option B, where it says, "The council as a body may provide the city manager with characteristics such as experience, knowledge, skills, and abilities desired of a person to fill certain positions," that goes to the point that the city manager was just saying, none of this would, this language preclude a future city council from holding a work session, having a resolution, passing that resolution, or even having a public, calling a public hearing and having the public come in. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I also just want to add that the language about the request in writing wouldn't preclude the informal, you know, input from individual council members, but it would, but, you know, if she wants the council as a body to participate, that, you know, the scope of that participation and, you know, deadlines and things like that would be, would be clear.
On this point, are there examples of other city charters that deal with this issue, that have the same form of government, city manager form of government?
It's been a while since I looked at this, but typically, no. With the council manager form of government, it is typically what we have, what we currently have, which is saying, city manager is responsible for all personnel and, you know, hiring, firing decisions.
So once again, Tacoma Park is doing something new.
Councilwoman Circe.
Thank you. So for me, I think we're having really good discussion, and in a positive way, in light of, you know, the positive results from engagement in the hiring process with the chief. There's the other side of the coin, which is removal, where it gets really prickly from, really quickly. And so I'm a little more of the mindset with the language that we have here to kind of make it a little bit more open and a little bit more at the discretion in terms of removal aspect, you know, insights in terms of someone's removal. You know, we would not be that individual's direct supervisor. We would not be in a position to, you know, weigh one way or the other in terms of their overall performance unless it has had some direct implications to how we've managed in our role as city council representatives. So I'm a little less inclined to be overly prescriptive, especially when we're tying the hiring and the removal and the charter together. It makes me be a little bit more of the mindset that, you know, we want to have the discussion to be able to provide insights in terms of what we deem is important, in terms of the characteristics and attributes of the position and that kind of thing, and the city council would have that discussion. And then the other piece would be, you know, should you or any city manager feel the need to engage the city council in a way that kind of goes beyond what they may decide is, you know, appropriate, what they would decide to do at their own discretion, then you would have the opportunity to seek out that council. So for me, I think that that's the right balance. I fear that if we're a little too over-prescriptive, and I defer to the legal team, you know, I'm always of the mindset, you don't want to give someone too much to where they could come back and it could bite you in the butt later if someone gets fired and they feel like they didn't get, you know, city council had the opportunity, and, you know, you don't want to get into that. So I don't know how much the charter would play a role in some of the HR legalities, especially as it relates to the removal process.
Okay. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I have some comments regarding the police chief section, but I'll save that for a later discussion. Just in terms of going with option A or option B, I, it seems to me that option B is slightly better. They seem fairly similar in that I personally like the language, I like not having the language in ways that the city manager deems useful and solicits from the council. And in option B, it doesn't include that, and I think, I don't think that's necessary, and, you know, whether or not the city manager deems it useful and solicits it or solicits in spite not, you know, considering it useful, I don't really think that's a relevant point. So I personally would lean towards option B.
Great. Well, I think we could do a quick hand vote. I'll just also say that I think there are overall points in option B, though I want to suggest some changes slightly better than option A. And so why don't we just do a hand vote on selecting either option A or option B to continue, yeah?
One clarification from Mr. Sigmund.
Can I just ask you on the language that you drafted? So where it says, that's option B, right?
Yes.
And may participate in appointment and removal decisions to the extent requested in writing by the city manager. To me, that means you may not do it if you haven't been requested in writing. So option B doesn't allow the informal consultation that Suzanne is talking about, is that right?
But it's all, both of those are when the council's acting as a body.
I'm sorry, say that again?
One and two are what the council acting as a body can do.
Right, and that seems to imply that we may do it if we're asked to, and the other piece of that is that you may not if you're not asked.
Right.
No, I mean, I didn't interpret it that way. I interpreted one to mean that the council as a body can decide at its own discretion to go to the city manager and articulate what we want in terms of a particular position.
And that's what we just said a few minutes ago, one stated.
But B would be, you know, if the city manager decided to seek input from us. That was my read of the language. I don't want to put words in.
So let me, let me go back to this, because I think it's a good question, because the way that it's worded in B is, "Except that the council as a body," and then if you jump to two, "may participate to the extent requested in writing by the city manager." That, to me, seems to preclude me talking to you one-on-one.
Right.
And I'd prefer to have the option to talk to you one-on-one as well. And so that's why, so I was kind of leaning towards one, I mean, A, because it seemed a little bit more permissive for me to be able to speak with you. So I would, I would like the opportunity to speak with you either as a body or individually. And, you know, and again, I wouldn't like it to be specified that it must be in writing, but certainly I would think that if I wanted to have the opinion of the council as a body, I would certainly probably would write that request to you so that it was clear. But that's, I don't know that it needs to be in the document, in the chart.
And then there's always the same-
Let me just say that I did not intend it to preclude the informal with individual council members, and if there's that much question about what it means, that I can certainly work to make it more clear, if that's what the-
Can you take out?
If the wording, as a body, were taken out, obviously, if you're doing a resolution that's as a body, but it doesn't necessarily preclude it from other kinds of discussions.
Yeah.
And B in writing.
Well, let's get to, sorry.
But I think it's a-
So can we, are we all looking at B? Can we just do, or did anybody want to make a pitch for A? But I feel like we're all looking at B, so can we just do a hand vote that we're going to focus our attention on B? Okay. Councilmember Kova, you're not voting?
Well, I'm just not convinced that that doesn't-
I'm not asking you to vote for it, I'm asking you to help us focus our conversation.
Eliminate A.
And just focus on B. You can abstain. So there were six of us who-
No, that's fine.
No, it's fine.
I didn't understand what you were asking. That's fine.
Fine. So we're going to focus our attention on B. Does it mean that we can't go back to A? We can. Right now, we had, we were discussing taking out as a body, so that we would make sure that we were not excluding whether, if the city manager wanted to discuss individually or in smaller groups, council. So that looks okay to the city attorney?
Well, I mean, obviously, you all can do what you want now, but previously, you know, there was, it was decided you wanted this, you know, to include the language as a body, and I think the purpose was so that, you know, if the council meets and comes up with the list of traits that they want, that, you know, that's conveyed to the city manager from the entire council, as opposed to, you know, each council member catching her in the hall and telling her something different.
But I think, I think city managers deal with that anyways, and-
But I assume that there would always be that catching her in the hall, but that, but that you all as a body would kind of, you know, give her that direction.
But the problem is the city manager that doesn't want to hear it at all.
Exactly.
And we want to make sure that, okay, you know, I don't want to point into the charter and say, hey, you're not allowed to talk to me about this because I do the hiring.
Right.
And so if I just take it as a body out, then we're okay.
Well, I think, I mean, my recommendation is, is rather than, I think we want to define what, you know, kind of what the council can do as a body, but I, and I think we should expressly allow the informal input. I would need to think about it, but-
I would move we strike as a body.
Yeah, I think I agree with that. Are we okay with striking?
Well, I think I, I think I see Ken's point. So if the council as a body agrees on something, that actually is a stronger-
Right, that carries weight.
Carries more weight with a hypothetically reluctant city manager. Well, I certainly know that. I report to four of seven. So if the council has a vote and there's a resolution that's, that passes, then that has weight. What I heard from you, Ken, just now was that, that there may be, like, some additional language added that says, you know, informal discussions can occur or something, but-
Can I, can I also just make a, I looked at the beginning here, and it says, "Neither the council nor any of its members." So I think that just the council itself actually refers to us as a body. I don't know that we actually need to have the body separately noted.
That's a really good point. So do we need, though, actually, it's like a really good point, if we say, "Except that the council," so if we assume in the reading of neither the council nor any of its members, instead of saying, "Except that the council as a body," should we say that the council and any of its members may, to make sure that somebody doesn't in the future say, "I'm not having a conversation, just one or two with you?"
Right.
So, so instead of as a body, we actually replace that with the council or any of its members? So it's a mirror, I think, as Councilwoman Kostick just pointed out.
That's a good catch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that probably works.
But so, just to be clear on that, so that allows potentially the informal one-on-one conversations that the city manager- conversations that the city manager is talking about, but only on experience, knowledge, skills, and abilities.
Well, no, let's get to that. Right. So I think that we clarified, I think...
We're working, I think.
We're working down.
Word in a word.
Well, I think we're working, so one concern was the informal versus formal. And what we said is we wanted to allow for both, as a council to weigh in on things, and also the informal conversations. And I think we just dealt with that. Now let's move on, Councilmember Kovar, to what that includes. And the way it talks about right now is that the council, either as a body or individual members, may provide the city manager with characteristics such as experience, knowledge, skills, and abilities desired of persons to fill certain positions.
So then I, then I, I thought I heard at least two of us say some variation on, Councilmember Siemens said candidate solicitation and comments on the finalists, and I said comments on the process. So candidate solicitation and process are sort of in the same category.
So what if we added a clause that said persons to fill certain positions as well as input on the hiring process?
That would work for me. I don't know if it would work for anybody else.
Okay, so that would cover, would that cover?
Cover a bunch of stuff.
Say it again?
So the sentence would read, you know, knowledge, skills, and abilities desired of persons to fill certain positions as well as input in the hiring process, on the hiring, or in the hiring process, on the hiring, on the hiring, thank you, on the hiring process.
Well, I guess the question, does that mean we can comment about the process, or about if the city manager wanted to ask what we thought of certain candidates?
Well, that's the next point. That's bullet two. Right now, we're identifying what we want to be able to have input on, and then the next point, too, will be what the city manager can come and information she can solicit from us.
Okay.
Is that, yeah?
Yeah. Certainly, the process is nice to, you know, work on that of what the process is going to be, and we can comment on that. But I wonder, going back to Ms. Ludlow's suggestion, that all of this, all my desires don't have to be covered by the city charter. If we don't need a separate resolution to state that the city manager shall include the council or community members or subject matter experts in the hiring process.
Well, I think...
That type of thing.
Okay, so I would object at "shall," but I think that, to me, I certainly don't have...
And again, I'm saying, instead of in the charter, that maybe belongs in a resolution.
No, I think that would violate the charter, even as being discussed. I think that...
Well, and that's what I'm asking, is how can we word the charter so that we don't have to be prescriptive, but we can make it possible?
So I think that, I think that what I just heard from Councilmember Dibala's language, which is to say, as well as on the hiring process, is a broad enough statement that then you can have a resolution that advises that you think X process would be the right process to go through. I don't think that, you know, I don't, I don't think it can be directive, that it has to be that way. I think it, I think that it, because then I think you're crossing that line.
I'm not sure what line we're worried about, other than ICMA's.
Well, and that's a big deal for hiring future city managers, because you might not get good candidates if, so that's where there's a big deal.
So if they're not willing to work for, work with us, then they won't work for us, or...
No, that's, that's not what I mean. The issue has, comes down to who is responsible for hiring and firing.
And I'm saying, the city manager should be responsible for the hiring and firing, but that there are certain steps in there that we expect to be taken during the hiring process so that the community and the council, as part of that community, are involved in the process.
I think I have to think about that.
Yeah.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned that, obviously, if the council has a resolution that identifies things, it has heavy weight. Once it hits "shall," that to me crosses that line.
But we're talking about process, not the hiring, not the individuals.
Yeah, but sometimes the process, how the process is defined, I mean, that might, that might actually change who you get or that kind of thing.
Yeah, that's the hope, that's the hope.
But it may be, but that depends on if there's a good council. And if the, so, so there may be like a process that then weeds out good candidates as opposed to...
This is great. We can't trust each other.
Right, and so that's just part of the reason that, that's why, you know, this is, does have some lines to it.
Right.
Yeah.
And maybe it's something we don't solve tonight, but we...
It may be, it may be.
You know.
But I, I mean, I do, I don't have a problem with saying that you can provide your thoughts on the hiring process.
Mm-hmm. All right.
That would be, to me, welcome.
So were there any other additional changes you wanted to offer at this time? Councilmember Siemens said?
No.
Okay. So then the number one now reads, may provide the city manager with characteristics such as experience, knowledge, skills, and abilities desired of persons to fill certain positions as well as input on the hiring process. Any other comments on that one or discussion? Sorry, I don't know if people's lights are still on, or, I'm just going to take them off.
My only comment, and I'm sorry, my, did you just turn me off?
Yeah.
I hope it was on prior to that.
You're on.
I just reserved the right to have suggestions when we come back to this in the next work session.
Absolutely. This is a charter amendment. We don't do this lightly at all. Okay, so then, moving on to the next statement, as written now, it says, may participate in appointment and removal decisions to the extent requested in writing by the city manager. Does anyone want to, I think we could first, we could first talk about the issue that has already come up in writing, if people want to speak to that. I'll put out there that after thinking about this, I don't think, I understand what the city attorney was trying to do, but I actually don't think it's necessary here.
And I would support the city manager's position on this, which was to strike it.
I'd prefer to strike it.
Okay. Anybody want to speak in favor of keeping in writing?
I can always write it, but I just, I don't think it needs to be specified.
Okay, so we will strike it. So that's struck. Any other, so now it says, may participate in appointment and removal decisions to the extent requested by the city manager. Is there, is there any language that you wanted to go back to, Councilmember Siemens from before, or?
No, I, I'm taking to heart, I'm sorry, I'm taking to heart Ms. Ludlow's suggestion that maybe the more specific pieces belong somewhere else than in the city charter.
Okay.
And I, and I hope to be able to talk with Mr. Sigmund before this comes back before us.
Sure.
Can I, can I ask, are you thinking a resolution that this council would make that would apply in the future?
Correct. And then future council, as bad as they might be, could change that.
They could change it if they wanted to, but it would be there. Okay.
Right. As good as they might be.
As opposed to trying to load up a charter with a lot of words.
Right, or there, as Ms. Ludlow mentioned before, there are other places that we can put more details and say, this is the process that we recommend, or something like that.
I think it was a good suggestion.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, so not seeing any more comments on that one.
The first paragraph.
Yeah. Then the final paragraph is particularly calling out the police chief on this one. And I think, given, my opinion is, given the conversation we just had about keeping our charter language as simple and clear as possible, I would prefer not calling out the police chief in this one. I think pulling out particularly the police chief adds to confusion and speculation by future city councils on why we did that. And I think we can put in, as Councilmember Siemens said, in either a resolution or other items, documenting the process that we just did, that particularly for a police chief, given that position, this type of process we had was a good one moving forward. So I would move to strike the paragraph on the police chief.
I'm good with that.
Councilmember Siemens is good with that? Councilwoman Siriessi?
I agree.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on that one?
One.
Good.
I'm against removing it.
Okay.
I would be in favor of modifying it. It was hand vote approved five to two, just to be clear about that again. And I guess, just one last time, I just want to say, if it's absolutely clear that there's nothing that we would do that's involved in hiring, but just consulting, what's the downside to that?
The question, actually, had a discussion with Councilmember Dibala this afternoon, is kind of, the implication of "shall consult" leans really heavily towards having to accept what you hear. And it doesn't always, but it can be interpreted that way in a number of places where I've seen it used. It has heavier weight than just, you know, "shall talk with." I mean, there's a, there's a something that, it just, I've seen it used in a heavier way. And so I'd prefer not to use that term. And again, I don't think it's helpful to call out the police chief. I think, frankly, if, you know, I've always thought that if the, if the council, if I should consult with anybody, it would be on a position of the city clerk, which works most closely with you, as opposed to the police chief, in terms of...
They stay forever.
No, they don't. But, but, so I, I just, I don't think it's helpful to call it out, and I don't like the term "shall consult."
I won't vote against striking it, but I honestly think you're creating something that isn't real when, what you've just said, to be honest about it. And I respect the work, the work you've done, the work you've done on that, but I just feel like that's not, the plain words of it don't mean that.
I mean, I guess I'll add that, I mean, this is all very nuanced, but, but I have seen in practice, when there's a blurring of the lines between, you know, who makes the hiring and firing selections, and then you have staff people going around the city manager to specific council members, and it really can get messy and make the city manager's job difficult. So I think, and it's hard to, yes, it all seems kind of innocuous, but, but in practice, it can have real significance.
Councilwoman Siriessi?
I just want to echo that in a lot of regulatory language and law, "shall" means "must," "shall" means "required," and that is typically how it is interpreted. So if it's not something that we want required to happen at all times, we probably should not use the word "shall." And I also just want to stress that I do think that aspects of paragraph B are incorporated in A. So I think the key distinction is, you know, are we asking the city manager to be required to seek out our council when we're talking about the police chief? And if the answer is no, then we don't need "shall." And if we're asking for them to do something that is distinctly different from what's called out in paragraph A, then we, you know, I don't really see a strong need. And it doesn't appear that there's a strong difference between what we're asking for in A and what we're asking for in B. It just seems like in B, we're requiring the city manager to consult. And so if what we're saying is we don't want to make that a requirement, then I don't see a strong need for B.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I also would support striking B. And I don't think it makes sense to add a section specifically focused on one particular position, as we've noted. And I think, basically, what's covered there, to me, seems to be covered in the above sentences. And I think we, as a council, would be able to provide that input to the city manager, who would be able to, you know, accept that and move forward and could request to work more or could not. And I think if we had a city manager who didn't want to work with the input that we had given, I think that would be a situation we would have to deal with, you know, as sort of a separate issue, and would probably be a much larger issue. So I think I would support striking B.
Okay.
Can I ask, so if we strike B, does that mean that this process can be applied to all of the senior staff, that the city manager?
Actually, more junior staff as well.
Even more than that. That's what I think it should be. I should be able to ask you about, you've got expertise in finance, and I'm looking for a new finance director. I'd like to talk to you about it.
Right. Paragraph A would apply to any employee.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Let's do a hand vote of all those in favor of striking paragraph B. Please raise your hands. I have one, two, three, four, five, six. And one opposed? I'm one opposed. All right, unless there are other points people would like to make on this, I suggest that we take, we have one more thing to do tonight here. Okay? Be packing up. That we make the changes that we discussed this evening and bring this back. Individual council members may discuss if they want to.
They can always talk to me.
They must.
There's any must, they shall consult with the city attorney on these, on other issues, but we'll, we'll bring this back again, and then also explore additional areas in which we can look at the process and define it moving forward. So thank you to the city attorney for staying. Our last item this evening is our council procedures. This is a work session, then we'll vote on these. So basically, the last time these were reviewed were when the last city council was sworn in in 2015. This document basically just outlines how we function as a city council, just to make it clear to ourselves and members of the public. Not much has been changed in this. The meeting day and time stays the same. We meet on Wednesdays at 7:30 for our regular meetings. It outlines what a quorum is. I thank the city clerk for cleaning up some of the language here and moving around some of the paragraphs. The place that you will see that our substantial changes are regarding, cleaning up the language around work sessions and voting sessions. It used to be in the past that the city council would have certain meetings set aside just as voting meetings where they voted, and others were work sessions. We found in the prior city council that it was better when we needed to vote on something, that we weren't constrained by that schedule. And so we took that out of this. The other area, as Mr. Sherman noted in public comment, that we wanted to make clearer were the public comment section. Thanks to many residents, we've had some questions and wanted to clarify this. I think I thank Mr. Sherman for sending us an email of his comments. I would say I think they're all excellent comments that we can adopt in this document to make it clear. And I believe you had some other ones that we can look at as well, but I want to, let's see, Councilmember Smith, is that an old light?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens, is that a new light or an old one?
That's a new light. I just wanted to say, I assume that these are all under "may" and not "shall."
I believe they are. Is there... Does anyone else have any other comments, or Councilmember Kovar?
One quick question. When people, and maybe this is something of the city clerk, when people submit comments in writing, those may not get pulled together till fairly late. So do members of the public get to see those? They're not in the packets that are publicly available, right?
Right. I mean, they would be public, but would they, they haven't been posted, but they're always, can be reviewed, so...
So that's one thing that just occurred to me. When we had the Tacoma Junction, for example, there was three hours of, you know, oral testimony, comments by people, and kind of an equal number of emails of some people who have kids or whatever, couldn't get here. And in many cases, the members of the public never find out about that. So I don't know what the answer is, but if there's some way to kind of get that...
Would it be possible to append written comments onto the meeting minutes?
Yeah. Yes, it would.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. We'll think about it. And if you want to come back to us, because I think Mr. Sherman also raised that, because there is a record in the minutes of who speaks during public comments, and that's reflected in the minutes. And then if we appended any materials people handed out in the meeting, or emails that people submitted, written comp testimony, that could all be just as appendices to the minutes and then available.
Certainly for the, for the larger items, though, you know, we try to categorize them and put them on the website, and we've done that in a number of cases. But it isn't consistent across topics.
I think that seems like a good solution. The one other thing is, and I was struck by it when you responded to people during the comment period, is that something that we ever want to think about?
What it actually says here, we don't do that. And so that's why I said tonight, it sort of broke with protocol, but I felt like it was important for people watching, just in case, that it was made clear that we had not discussed as a body nor individually, the taking of Ms. Robb's house. So I just wanted to clarify that before we went too far into our meeting, and...
I think in those cases, that was, that was fine, and the protocols could be broken.
Right.
I guess the question is, in a larger way, should we ever think about some difference other than just the three-minute, the series of three-minute comments on, you know, another way to get exchanges? And I'm not proposing something today, it just struck me at times that, you know, that can be limiting in how it works.
Well, I think, and Councilmember Siemens raised this with me the other day, too, we do have other types of meetings, and that's, I think it's sort of referenced in here that there are other meetings that we would deal with public comments in different ways. So for example, we do hold open houses. We have, for example, when we did the police selection, instead of having it here, we had it in the azalea room where we could sit around a table with members of the public. And it was more of a discussion back and forth rather than the public comment. So I, I don't see this document as precluding those types of meetings. But I also don't know if we have to actually specify all those, because I think being innovative and thinking of new ways of engaging with the public...
The community conversations with the...
Yeah, and we had the, and we had the community conversations and, and we, yeah, and all that, so...
Are you suggesting a change to the poll? Are you suggesting a change?
Well, I think on seven, that would just be, that we would append that to the...
To the minutes, yeah.
To the minutes, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, do we have to put that?
So, great, and I believe that was it.
Yeah, I have a...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The idea. Sorry. Yeah, I, thank you to Mr. Sherman for those comments. I think those would be great additions. And I just had a quick question about number, number five. It's noted that members of the public are expected to only speak once during general public comments, and I know there have been questions before about whether people can speak twice, if they're speaking on behalf of a committee and themselves, or they're speaking on behalf of a business and themselves, or an organization. I don't know if it makes sense to, I would read this as they can only speak once, period. They can't speak once for themselves and once for another organization or committee. And I don't know if it makes sense to outline that specifically here, or if we feel like that's what it says, and if that's what we want it to say. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, what this allows and doesn't allow, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
And since we organize the public comments by topic, if they wanted to speak on more than one topic, usually we let them do that, so it's not clear in it.
Right. So maybe we should make it clear that you can speak, let's do that one first, because that's easier than that one. We should make it clear that you can speak on a voting item then during general public And then the other issue is, if someone is coming to speak on behalf of a, say, a resident committee, then do they also get to speak on their, their personal beliefs?
During general public comments?
Or during voting items, so it might be...
Sure. I mean, I don't think we have a whole lot of people doing that all the time.
Yeah.
We did have that come up a few meetings ago, where we had someone who had signed up to speak as a business and as an individual.
I want to do, that's next.
Okay.
I first want to do, you're representing, so you're the chair of a committee, and you need to come and present on behalf of the committee. I kind of feel like you should also be able to share your personal view, because your personal view might, in some ways, conflict with what you need to report on behalf of the committee. So that...
And I've personally had that experience. Right. I was speaking during the general comments on behalf of a committee, but I wanted to make a general comment on a totally different thing, just as myself, and I didn't know if I could do that, so I didn't do it. But I don't know, it might be worth...
I think that's worth, if other people agree, specifying, because I feel like if you're representing a committee, yeah, you might have a different opinion. Now, the issue of speaking as an individual and then speaking as if you are a business owner, getting to speak on the same topic, to me, that's double dip, that's double dipping. And I think...
We all are multiple heads.
Yes. So I would say in that case, if others agree, yeah, that that would be getting extra time, which someone can always request also. So we do have that option of somebody requesting additional time, so. All right. Any other pieces to this? So again, I just want to thank the city clerk for cleaning this up, and we will come, this will come back as a voting item very soon.
So are we making the changes that were suggested?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'll put a revised draft in the packet, I mean, in the, on the website tomorrow.
Thank you.
So it's out there.
Because we're voting on it next week?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure, so, thank you. All right. Any other business this evening? I think we are adjourned. Thank you.